We'll call the meeting to order. And Russell, if you can call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Here.
Councilmember Jawanski?
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Here.
Sorry, we have a quorum here.
Yes.
And it sounds like we have an additional attendee as well. All right, let's pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Which stands for one nation under God.
Under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
Right, welcome.
Hi, everybody.
All right, I think we can probably jump right into the first quasi judicial item. Keith, you need to introduce or do the rules for this?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. The rules of quasi judicial procedure are on the agenda. As you're well, all well aware at this point, sometimes the commission is sitting in a legislative capacity. That's when you're making rules governing the entire town. Other times, the municipality is acting in its quasi judicial capacity, which means that you're looking at one specific instance in determining whether or not something that they're seeking meets the requirements of the code. And if you believe it does, then you have to approve it by a unanimous vote. And it's called quasi judicial because you are sitting as judges and learning the facts as judges rather than a policy decision for the entire town. So there are several items tonight that are quasi judicial in nature. So as a result, it's a little bit of more formal process. And as a result, we're gonna have to swear in anyone who speaks on these items and go from there. But Russell, before we do, there are two items on this agenda that are being tabled. Is that correct?
I thought it was just one.
Just one, just one, Keith.
Jeff, you're on, I couldn't hear you on mute. What number is that, just to make sure everyone knows?
Item four.
Okay, so at this time, so we don't have to get confused with item four and don't need to swear everyone in for that because it's being tabled. Can there be a motion to table that to a time and date certain, which Andy would be the next commission meeting, which is the 25th?
It would February 25th at 7:00 P.M.
I make a motion.
Right, so there's a motion, Russell, in this, in a second, to table that to February 25th at 7:00 P.M. And Jeff, for the general public's knowledge, the reason why that's being tabled is a notice was not fully effectuated in accordance with the code. So they're gonna renotice it and have it on February 25th so that anyone who wants to be heard can be heard. Russell, if you could take a role in that item and then we'll swear everyone in.
Sure. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jawanski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to table.
Thank you. Items three, five, and six are quasi judicial on your agenda. Anyone who wishing to speak on three, five, and six needs to be sworn in. Clearly, because we can't see you, if it's a member of the public wishes to speak on the item, we'll just keep asking you at the podium to confirm that you've been sworn in. So Russell, if you could swear in anyone who wishes to speak, you need to raise your right hand at home and just say yes after Russell finishes the oath.
Okay, if you would raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. Russell, could you please read item three into the agenda?
Certainly. Item three is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP 26-20 to subdivide 4.78 net acres of property into two lots of 2.0 and 2.78 acres, generally located on the west side of Holatay Trail approximately 2,000 feet south of Palomino Drive, legally described as the north half of Track Eight, less the east 20 feet Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision of Section 34 Township 50 South, Range 40 East, according to the plat thereof recorded in Plat Book One, Page 152 of the Public Records Miami Dade County, Florida. Said lands lying and being in Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Is the petitioner?
Motion to approve.
Well, wait, we gotta just make sure everyone's here. Is the petitioner for MPC Family Holdings LLP here?
We have Jane Storms here, and let me just allow her to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
This is Circumcision.
Oh, okay, not Jane.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, good, thank you.
Okay, you're here on behalf of MPC Family Holdings LLP?
Yes, sir.
And you've been sworn in?
Yes, sir.
And in a minute, Jeff is gonna just read in the staff report. Have you had the opportunity to read the staff report?
Yes, I did.
And is your, you and your client agree with the conditions contained therein?
Yes, we are.
Okay, Jeff, could you please present the staff report?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is a 4.7 net acre property. It's in the Rural Ranches zoning district. In the Rural Ranches district, every lot has to be two net or two and a half gross acres. It's an either or. Net acres mean exclusive of right of way. It also means exclusive of canals and shared water bodies and ingressy ingressments. In other words, two acres of buildable usable property that is, that does not have an encumbrance related to access or a canal body or a shared lake. This property has a small water body on it, but it's fully contained. And it's 4.7 acres exclusive of any right of way. It is large enough to be divided into two properties. And that's what they're seeking to do in this case. There were originally two buildings on this property. One of them was demolished. One of them, which is a 1,200 square foot former home, still remains. And a new home is currently under construction. That's fine. That can happen irrespective of this application because the second home is going to be demolished. Demolition permit has been pulled. And it's a condition of approval that the main, the new house cannot be occupied until the old house is demolished on that same lot. So there will be one house on the property. The old house and the new house, which are pretty close to each other, are both forward on the east portion of the lot, which would be lot one if this application is approved. So the, this would be a situation where you have a front lot and a back lot. This is a fairly common thing that you see throughout Sunshine Ranches. And the back lot will gain access through a driveway. There's an existing driveway right now that runs along the north property line. And what they're gonna do is extend the property line for the back lot along that driveway so it connects to the street. And it will have direct frontage and access to Holatay. The front lot will be two acres, two net acres. So it's sufficient size to meet our code requirements. It's 165 feet in width. Rather, I'm sorry, it's 140 feet in width. Our code requirement is 125. And both lots meet all of our dimensional and area requirements. Holatay Trail has sufficient right of way abutting the property, so we're not requesting any additional right of way for Holatay Trail. And on the west side, unimproved 139th Avenue, which has been added to the town's Greenways map as a recreational trail alignment, has an existing 40 feet, 40 feet of right of way abutting the property. And again, as a trail right of way, we haven't requested any additional right of way for that quarter either. We perceive letters of no objection from all applicable utilities, including Central Brownell Work Control District. And we recommend approval of the application. We'll note that the approval doesn't become effective until the resolution approving the application has been recorded in the public records. And the applicant has six months from tonight to do that until the approval expires. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does any member of the Town Council have any questions for Jeff at this time? Seeing none.
I think I just got one, quick one. I got one. I got one.
Please.
Hello?
Yeah, please.
Okay, yeah. This driveway, the driveway will be a private road, correct?
It's, it's literally a driveway. It's not shared with anybody. It is exclusively for the back parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, to that, because it was probably in your description, each property has their own access. They're not sharing that driveway, correct?
Correct. Let's put it this way, the front lot has the option of getting access off that driveway or they can get access directly from Holatay. Either way, both, either situation is compliant with our code.
But if they do the, the first part from that driveway, they're gonna need amusement from the back property.
Correct, and that's not been proposed. So as it stands, they're each gonna have their own independent access.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Jeff at this time? Seeing none. Elizabeth, you there?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any presentation or any additional comments to make?
No, I defer everything to Jeff.
Great. Thank you. Before we turn it over to the public for comment, and Russell, you'll need to run that, obviously. Is, it's a requirement of state law under the Jennings Rule to disclose if anyone's had any ex parte communications concerning this matter. Has anyone had any such communications? As such, we need to disclose at this time?
No.
None.
I've had some emails from various residents. And I also spoke with Chris Brownlow concerning some waivers of plots.
Was it this particular one that you spoke about?
I don't recall which one because there's so many of them.
And was the emails on this one?
I believe this was part of them, yes.
Do you know who wrote you? It's best to disclose as much as possible.
Tony Brown, Robin Ditzian, and the other name escapes me right now, and Chris Brownlow.
And were they foreigner or against this item?
They were against this item.
Were you, did you respond to any of them?
I responded that I received their email.
Thank you. All right, did anyone else have anything to disclose?
I did. I did, I did speak with Robert.
I'm sorry, councilmember, because you're going out.
Go ahead, David.
Yeah, I, I received email from Robin, and I spoke with Robin about this. And she was against it, obviously, is.
Thank you.
Correct.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I received the same emails. I didn't respond to anybody at this point. Keith, I didn't know we had a disclose email.
Yeah, you should because that is someone's, if you read it, a lot of people don't read them so they don't disclose them because they know it's a quasi judicial item. But if someone's effectively trying to lobby you on an item, I feel more comfortable with you disclosing that.
Okay, going forward, we'll do.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I also received that email. And it was under the impression that was not, you know, something to be disclosed, but will in the future.
It's, it's no big deal. Thank you. I guess rather safe than sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Polikoff, I also received those three emails that Gary recently mentioned. And like I said, they all weren't in agreement with what was going on. They thought it had to be two and a half acres. I don't think they understood that it needed to be two acres a net. I think they understood it was two and a half acres. So I did receive those same emails. I have not responded to any of them at this time.
Thank you. All right, at this point, Russell, you can open it up to the public. Russell, just a reminder, you're on mute.
Thank you, apologize. If there's anybody wishing to speak, I don't see any hands raised at this time, Mayor. Oh, there we go, Mrs. Ditzian. Hang on one second. Okay, Ms. Ditzian, you can, you have two minutes, you can speak. Can you hear us? Ms. Ditzian, can you hear us?
She seems to have dropped. Oh, no, I see her, okay, sorry.
Ms. Ditzian, can you hear us? I don't know if you wanna go see if there's anybody.
Russell, we'll see if there's any other speakers.
I don't see any other hands raised at this time.
I see now multiple boxes, Russell, on our screen for, for Ms. Ditzian.
See that too. I'm not sure why they have two entries. Let me try to remove them. Or at least one of them. Ms. Ditzian, can you hear us?
We have a few of these, as we mentioned, more than just one. Maybe we can try again the next time.
Okay. All right, let me remove them then, and they can try to get back on.
All right, well, then, at this time, Mayor, public comment will be closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments?
No.
Elizabeth, do you have any concluding comments?
No, I don't.
Thank you. So Mayor, at this point, I'm gonna turn it back over to you for deliberation in the council. If the council finds that it meets the requirements of the code for the waiver plat provisions, then it's appropriate to approve it by a unanimous vote. If you don't find it meets the conditions of the code, you can deny it. You can also approve it with conditions. But anything you do does require unanimous vote, except for denial can be not unanimous because it just wouldn't get unanimous for approval. All right, thanks, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Keith. I did wanna make a comment. I received the emails, did not respond to them because this is a quasi judicial item. But I did wanna make a comment based on those emails. And from, you know, from a rural standpoint, I could not agree more with the emails and the sentiment that's being expressed in them and preserving our open spaces and trying to retain the larger properties, less development. I'm with you 100%. On the other side, there is, you know, these property owners have property rights, and they bought it knowing that these rights and this was available to them. And we, as was talked about earlier, our job here is, is really to follow the law. And, and so that's what we're, we're being called to do. And nothing has been brought up to indicate that this is not within what the law allows. And so so, so it is one of those things where we'd love to have the additional open space, but weigh that against the property rights, and we need to follow the law. So kind of our, we need to move in a particular direction. We need to approve this based on our responsibilities in the town.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, absolutely, Jim.
Real quick, the emails that I received, everyone, like I mentioned before, is under the impression that we have to enforce two and a half acre minimum. I'm not sure the public understands it's two acres net, two and a half acres growth. And they do meet the two acre net requirement. So that may be something that we need to explain to the public in the future a little more about. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Bob? Yeah, I was, I had a conversation with Jeff about that same thing earlier today because I didn't recall when or why it was switched from 2.5 to 2O net. And he went through and explained it to me. And I think the public needs to hear it because, you know, we're always talking about how this zoning requires 2.5 acres. Well, in a scenario, it requires 2.5 acres, but it can also be two acres. And people are very concerned that we're reducing our standard when we're not. I believe we inherited this from the county. That's correct. So Jeff, I don't know if you wanna spend a minute or two on that?
Sure, sure. I think it's helpful to look at this in sort of a reverse manner. The county's land use plan regulates everything based on density, not lot size, but density. So typically, they say that a zoning code will say you have to have a minimum lot area of one acre, half an acre, quarter of an acre, whatever it is. The land use plan is another story. Land use plan regulates by density. Their land use plan generally doesn't care how large an individual lot is. Somebody's got some background noise going on.
Yeah, there's some feedback.
The, the land use plan doesn't really care how large an individual property is as long as the overall density within a development works out to be no more than what the land use plan says it can be. In the case of the town of Southwest Ranches, we have, we have a state land use, which is one unit to the acre. We have rural estates and rural ranches and agricultural. And it actually says two and a half gross or two net. And it's actually unusual in that it even calls out net acreage because land use plans, like I said, regulate on a gross acreage basis. All they concern themselves with is that the overall density of an area doesn't exceed whatever the standard is. In this case, it's saying you can have 2.5 gross, which is an easier standard to meet for some lots than the two acres net. The two acres net is preferable to two and a half acres gross. Because if you have, if you cannot meet the two acre net, but you can meet the two and a half acre gross, that means you don't have two net acres. And you're relying on a large swath of right of way. Usually, it would be a corner lot, would have to have at least two major roadways running along the lot in order to extend the lot line out to the middle of the road, each road, and count that whole area as your gross acreage. So from our standpoint, we'd rather see every lot meet the two acre standard than the two and a half acre standard. So I hope that explains a little bit how this thing works. Another example is in the one acre districts or land use categories, for example. Again, it's a, it's a gross acre. So the comp plan, the Broward County Conference of Plan said, in the rural estates, the maximum density is one unit per acre, one unit per gross acre. Our code is more restrictive than, than most codes. And it doesn't let you take out area for roads, drainage, and that type of thing so that you still come out with an overall density of one unit per acre. We actually require that every single lot be a full acre. So we're actually stricter than the land use plan for Broward County ever really envisioned that being. Okay? Typically, a builder's acre is what you would find in zoning code when the land use density is one unit per acre. Okay, so in this case, the two and a half acre option is an option that most lots can't meet. Most lots don't have enough right of way abutting them to hit two and a half acres. And it's probably there because, A, like I said, a land use plan operates on a gross density basis. But also, there was a recognition that if you can, if you have two full net acres, you, you meet the requirement, even if you don't have the two and a half gross. And it was just something that was the way that the county put it together at the time. It's what we have today. And in all of the applications that are on the agenda tonight, they have at least two full net acres for each parcel, and that's what we want.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
Mayor, at this point, you would need a motion in any direction by the council in a second to debate it.
Keith, Keith, before we do that, I'm wondering, is it completely out of order to possibly open it back up to the public and see if, is it this man?
Absolutely not out of order, because I know someone tried to get in who could not.
Yeah, Mayor, can I make?
We're working on that.
Can I make a quick announcement about that so everybody's aware of what to do? If they're having difficulty, for whatever reason, logging on to the meeting electronically or through their computer, they can call in. They have the call in option. That's, that information is always on our virtual meeting notices. I'm gonna provide a couple of numbers. So if someone wants to call in, they can do that as well. And so that phone number, the first phone number that I'm gonna give you is area code 312-626-6799. Of course, you have to dial one first. So again, 1-312-626-6799. Or they can also call 1-929-205-6099. They must also enter the meeting ID number, followed by the pound sign. And the meeting ID is 893-7636-9880. Again, the meeting ID is 893-7636-9880. And it must be followed by the pound sign. Once you get into the meeting and you wish to raise your hand virtually to be called on to speak, you must dial star nine to raise your hand. So again, star nine to raise your hand and indicate your, your wish to participate in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell.
Okay, we do have a caller that's called in. Last four digits of the phone number, 0606. Okay, 0606. If you wish to speak, you have to unmute. Hello, can you hear us? Yeah.
I can hear you now.
Okay, we can, I.
Hear me?
I said, we can hear you. Go ahead, you have two minutes.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, we can hear you, you have two minutes.
Okay. It's regarding the property at 5401 Holatay Trail. There was something.
Name and address.
Yes, name and address.
I'm sorry, you need your name and address before you start, if we could.
Robin Ditzian, 5501 Holatay Trail.
You?
I'm the one who sent out the email complaining about this, that apparently I need to make phone calls now instead of sending emails. So I speak to several of you regarding it. But there's some, a couple of things I do have questions about. First of all, the property, they started building this house before there was even a permit pulled. There was also made mention that they're going to have two roads going into that property off of Holatay. That's what, one thing was said, and then it was changed around. On the letter that I received, it does not show where the property is being divided between the two acres and the 2.7 acres, although in property appraisers, it shows that it's 4.69 acres, not 4.78. There is nothing showing where the setbacks are for the front and backyard. I do know, I just heard that they're going to destroy the older house, which, you know, helps out. But it doesn't show that. Give me a second, because I do have several things that I have went ahead and had questions on. If the land, if, nothing has been approved yet, how are they already building a house? They, that nothing has been approved, that, that without first subdividing the property. The picture that I received does not even show where the property is being subdivided. So I don't understand how that happened. Again, I do know that they started building the house before there was even a permit pulled. It was stopped for a couple of weeks because I spoke to my neighbor, and he had called about it, and they stopped it because there wasn't permit filled. But again, now I'm questioning. But again, now I'm questioning how they're going to have access because you're saying that it's two acres and 2.78 acres, but then you're going to have two different roads coming on to Hollity. So I, I'm a little confused about all of that now. And I do understand that it's supposed to be two acres net and 2.78, but again, the property appraiser shows that it's 2.69 acres. So I'm very concerned about this whole thing. And you tabled the one thing that I was going to talk about again. That how these things happen or why anything is allowed to happen until people are allowed to speak on it. I guess that's about it. I do have my mother here. She wants to also talk a little bit. I don't, you know, I did call in or I sent in a email stating that both of us wanted to speak.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So I mean, we both raised our hands. And I'm a little curious because I was in the middle of the meeting. And then I said, as a matter of fact, I sent you all a copy of a picture that showed that I was removed from the meeting, which I wasn't too happy about.
So definitely, your, your, your mother can speak. We were trying to apologize for removing you from the meeting. We were, we saw two entries there and we thought maybe by removing one, we might be able to hear you speak from the other. So we were trying to help, but apologize if that was an issue. But please, yes, your mother is more than welcome to speak, just if she can state her name and address.
Okay, my name is Carolyn Dixon, and I have been a Sunshine Ranch homeowner since 1983. And I will tell you the home that are being built here now are not homes, they are mansions. This was supposed to be a rural ranch with horses and cows and chickens. And it seems that what is being built is not that. There are, there are no little horse people out here, and most of the horse people have already left town because they've been chased out. My fear is that eventually that you will chase me out also. After 37 years, I don't want to be chased out, but you keep allowing bigger pieces, bigger homes to be built and on smaller lots. Now this house, we have no idea how big the new house will be, but the little house that's being built is very small. And it's not going in with the, with the lifestyle that was committed to me 37 years ago. That's my opinion on it. And I think you guys need to stop thinking in terms of dollars, which is what you're all thinking of. And start thinking about the people that are still here that have been here for years. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you voicing that opinion.
I see a mayor, and it's up to you, one more resident has their hand up.
Yes.
Want to take that last one, then we'll close public comment again.
Sounds good.
Russell, you're on mute again.
Mr. Lasky, can you hear us?
Do you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
My biggest concern is exactly what I'm being faced with.
Hey, Jim, Jim, it's very difficult to hear you. It's, it's, we can just barely hear you. I don't know if you can improve that or not.
How about now?
It's very low.
I don't know why, I've got a pretty big mouth.
There we go, that's a little better.
Okay, that's, I got my face. Anyway, the limit's melting. It says on your site plans, the limits, but then people fill beyond that. And the bigger developer, the more they fill beyond that. If you go look where Leonardo's building down, right on the Hialeah Broward County line down there, you can look and see what happens. They've, they got water that even with the little rain we had last week, it's still laying on the surface. It doesn't percolate. That's one of our big problems. That's why I've got a flood in my yard all the time. And they're just, we have discontinuous limestone. So those have culverts in them and, and places for the water to drain very effectively. But in the situation I have, that development started three years ago, that property was being filled in way beyond the limits. All right, and it was compacted, it was specified in the site plan, in a note, okay, in 12 inch lifts. Okay, to 90% density. Now, anybody that built anything will tell you that's impervious. It's, you know, you, there's plenty of engineers that agree, including the one that I have retained. But somehow you've got to get a grip on that because, I don't mean that meaningly. We got a whole western side of this town, country acres, that could be the victim of this, and we're already drowned in now. And we just got to do something about this. So that was my two cents, and I hope you take it into consideration.
Thank you. It does look like we have one more individual for public comment.
Okay, the next speaker, mayor, is Patricia.
And again, just so that everyone knows, this isn't the public comment portion of the agenda. It's the section speaking on this particular quasi judicial item.
Okay, the next speaker mayor is Patricia Wareham. Ms. Wareham, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Excellent. Yeah, just really quickly, I live, we live diagonally from this property. My concern, as the previous speaker spoke, and the pre, the first speaker spoke, is specifically related to the water management and the berm issue. We, my husband, we built in 2010. My husband's a general contractor. At the time, there was a different, just the restrictions on Southwest Ranches or Sunshine Ranches requirements were very specific about the berm issue. We do have berms all around our home. We have a new home. But we have a bunch of trees. We have, the berm is still up. I have not seen anything related to the berm with that particular property. And yes,
We have to maintain the water.
We had to maintain the water on our own property. We had a little portion that was wetlands, and we've been very mindful about that. So I would like to just express concern about this specific build, whether it is going by the specific town requirements ordinances or not. And I'll just leave it there. And not, not obviously in agreement if it's not by the codes.
Great.
Okay, Mayor, there are no other public speakers. We did have a motion already to approve, I believe.
No, but Russell, I, I think the motion may have been inadvertent. It was prior to the, the quasi judicial hearing. When your quasi judicial
All right, Mayor, you have another speaker too. Somebody requesting speaking.
Okay, this will be, this needs to be our last. If, if anyone else would like to speak, please put your hand up now. We have to kind of, this is a quasi judicial item, and, and so we have to walk through it in a particular order, as Keith was pointing out. So we, we just need to handle all these together. So if you would like to speak, please indicate by putting up your, your hand now.
Looks like the, oh, okay, there I go. Okay. All right, the next speaker mayor is Dwight Benjamin. Mr. Benjamin, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm actually the next door neighbor to this property. And I thought the house, the new house being built was pretty close to my existing residence. And I inquired of the town if it was in violation of the property line. But the town said, actually, the, the, there, there is an allowance for, for it to be within 25 feet of the property line. And they, when they came and did inspection, they thought it was less than 25 feet, but when they did the actual measurement, it was within inches of, of 25 feet. So it is legal. The problem is that the foundation of the new house is at a higher elevation than my property. The berm is not yet built. I suspect they will do it eventually. But the water, the runoff from the new house will actually be coming onto my property. And you know, we already have a problem with drainage. So while the, 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 the property is legal in the, in the, in the sense that they're not valid, and it, it, it has violated my expectations of living in an open space. The, 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 the new house is right next to mine. I can, I can speak just in my normal tone to the neighbor next door because it's so close. But from what the city has said, it is not in violation of the rules. It's just, it, it is defeat in the spirit of my expectations of living in Southwest Ranches. I just wanted to voice that concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for voicing that. Appreciate it.
Mayor, at this time, public session is closed. It's back to the council for deliberation. And again, you'd need to make, have a motion on the floor to debate.
So moved.
And if it's a motion for approval, if you could just have conditions.
Motion for approval with an acceptance of the conditions.
Second.
Great, thank you. I wonder if Jeff can, can address some of the, the issues that were brought up about the, the home being built, the berm, the berm being, not being there yet. Kind of how the, I, I guess, I guess what I'm, I just, I think it's important for folks to understand kind of the steps that this has to go through and what kind of comes first and second and third kind of a item.
Chair Mayor, regarding the, the construction of the house prior to this application being approved, there's no relationship between the two. The ability to, for them to build a house on this property has nothing to do with subdividing it. So that's, that's one issue. The permits and all that have been straightened out. The, somebody brought up the acreage look is a little different on BCPA. I am aware that BCPA made a mistake. As it pertains to this property, they show right of way, they show more right of way than there is, which is actually private property. So their acreage number is a little smaller than, than what the survey came up with. And I've had discussions with the surveyor and the county, different departments with the county. And they've acknowledged the mistake and hopefully they'll, they'll be fixing that on their, on their map soon. In terms of the burn, the timing of the berm, the berm has to be in place before the house is issued its certificate of occupancy. I would have to defer to engineering as to whether there's any requirement that it be in place before that. Certainly, the latest it can be in place is a CO. And I realize that when you build a foundation, that does create potential for some runoff. Probably not quite as much as when the house, when the roof is up. However, there is the potential for runoff until that berm is, is, is installed. So I would defer any further question on that to, to engineering. And I think, I think that answers the most of the questions.
Thank you, Jim. Keith?
Mayor, if I can add one thing?
Sure.
On the berm. The berm is, as, as Jeff indicated, is required at CO. We can request it earlier. It is not required. But we have, we have in the past requested that the berm be done sooner rather than later. As I said, it's not a requirement, but we've had some success with that and would be happy to make that, make that ask.
Great point. Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Oh, quite frankly, Mayor, if you wanted that, just make it a condition of approval, if the, if the council wanted that.
I would be in favor of that. Any other comments from the, from the council?
Do I need to amend my motion?
If that's what you would like, yes, it would just have to also, and the second one have to agree, that the berm would be installed prior to and just give a, give a timeframe.
Yep. No problem. Who is the second, David?
I did, I would agree. I agree to the amendment.
Okay, so what is the amendment? That a berm would have to be built prior to what?
Yeah, I think we would need some input from maybe Rod on this to know what's the proper event to trigger that.
If you're requiring this as a condition of this application, then the applicant has to satisfy that requirement before this approval takes effect. So they have, so you're, you're saying then that this one will not take effect until they put in that berm and it's inspected and approved. And that has to happen within a maximum timeframe of six months, because that's how long this approval is good for. If they don't record the resolution. So if you want to specify a faster timeframe, you know, than you would specify how many months they have to do that.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes, Rod.
Yeah, you can hear me. Okay, good, good. Good evening, everybody. So, so we, we have a lot of good success working with developers of, of properties to get the berms built in. As far as the timeline, it just depends on what their construction schedule is. Sometimes the schedule is a little bit delayed. Sometimes it's accelerated, so it's kind of hard to tell, you know, how much equipment they have mobilized to work at one time. So it's, it's, it's really, I mean, I, I feel pretty confident that we can work with, with the, you know, the, the builder to, to get it done. And a lot of times, they, they'll just put essentially an earth and berm and not necessarily finish it, but it'll essentially trap water and make them contain their own water, but it won't necessarily be approved by also central. So. I mean, like, like, like I said, if, if they have a lot of equipment out there, they're constantly working, I think, you know, and, and again, looking at the size of the property, it's pretty large, you know, I, I recommend giving them a substantial amount of time, you know. Definitely, you know, weeks or a couple of weeks to do it. So it just depends if they have equipment there all the time or not.
So it seems then reasonable to you, this is, this approval would be valid for six months, that that would allow sufficient time to put the berm in place?
Within six months for sure, yeah.
Okay.
I think you'd want it before the start of the rainy season, though.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the six months extended rainy season.
Yeah.
So just to help direct a little bit, Mayor, you have two choices here. You could go with the date, find a date, a finite point of construction. Or based on what Rod said, you could also maybe want to consider making the amendment that you would direct the engineer, the town engineer to work with the property owner, install a water retention berm at the appropriate time and, and give Rod the direction to work with them. But it's totally up to you all how you wish to proceed.
I, you know, I think the rainy season is a great point. I'm, I'm thinking maybe it needs to be in place by June 1st. That's my thought.
Makes sense.
Those, if that's the maker of the motion, motion and it's seconded, that's on the floor for debate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Rod, would, would June 1st be a reasonable time for you to work with the contractor and getting something like that done?
Yeah, I believe so. I think that's plenty of time.
Okay.
Mayor, it's up to you if you want to continue deliberation. If not, you can call the voted in point.
Is there any further comment from, from the council? Seeing none, let's go and call the roll. You're on mute. Russell?
My apologies. Okay, so I'm going to call the roll here, and the motion is to have the berm installed prior to June 1st of this year. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Your bright Chris?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Russell, if you could please read item five into the agenda again for was tabled to the next meeting. And then you will need to unmute yourself again.
I've got that lovely Fort Lauderdale airport traffic, so trying to spare you. As I'm sitting outside. Item number five is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP 28-20 to subdivide 4.0 net acres of property into two lots of 2.0 acres each, generally located south of Sterling Road on the west side of Stallion Way and generally described as Lot 2 and a portion of Lot 3 of Landmarket Sterling Ranches. According to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book 170, page 14 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Is Callaway Builders 4 LLC present?
I'm here present, Elizabeth.
Wow, Elizabeth, you got a terrible echo, but thank you for being present. Elizabeth, have you had the opportunity to review the staff report? And, um, are you accepting the staff report as written with conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think that echoes on her end. Um, uh, Jeff, at this point, uh, can you please enter the staff report into the record?
So entered. I'll summarize it. Uh, this is a platted piece of property. The, the Landmarket Sterling Ranches plat was for four lots. Um, all the lots access Stallion Way, which is a private cul-de-sac. Uh, this particular lot, uh, which is Lot 2 on the plat, was, uh, a very large property. I wouldn't be surprised if they intentionally created it as large as it is to eventually be split into two if somebody wanted to. Um, they had enough land to actually subdivide Lot 2 in half. Uh, but at one point in time, uh, after the property was platted, the town came back and said, you know what? Um, we need additional right of way for Sterling Road. So, um, an additional 15 feet or so was dedicated from this lot, uh, for Sterling Road. Fast forward to, uh, this application. Now they didn't have the four net acres anymore because of the dedication for Sterling Road. And interestingly, this, this illustrates the gross net, uh, relationship. Um, even though Sterling Road has a 55 foot half section and even though the lot includes a good portion of Stallion Way, those are all things that count as gross, but not towards net acreage. Um, they had 4.49, uh, net acres. They didn't have enough, um, to meet, uh, the two and a half acre requirement, uh, for one and, uh, under, under gross and the two net for another. So they were forced to find, uh, additional property in order to subdivide as they originally probably intended to do when the, when the property was platted. So, uh, they approached the owner of Lot 3, uh, immediately to the south. And that, that lot, uh, was well over three acres. Uh, I want to say it was, uh, about three point, uh, three point five acres. And they, uh, purchased a 16 foot strip, um, but from Lot 3, uh, so that they could have their four net acres to create two lots. We, uh, we verified that Lot 3 stands on its own. It is whole. It come, still complies with all of the zoning requirements, plot coverage setbacks, everything. So the, uh, transfer of land did not affect, make anything on Lot 3 non-conforming, uh, whatsoever. There's a, a second application associated with this one, which is a, a delegation request, otherwise known as the plat note amendment. Uh, it's a formality. But, uh, before this waiver of plat can become effective, if approved, the plat note, uh, needs to be amended to allow five homes on the plat instead of four. And this is a, it's a ministerial type approval, uh, that, that has to go through, uh, Broward County Commission, um, before it's finally approved. I will note that the order of operations here went, was, was not as it should have been. A lot of people think that subdividing just means splitting a property, creating a new lot, but that's not the case. Subdividing means you're changing lot lines in any way, shape or form. Uh, and what happened is when the, uh, the owner purchased that strip from Lot 3, they violated our, our code by subdividing without a waiver of plat. So what should have happened is they came, is that they would come to you with the proposal to buy that 16 foot strip from Lot 3 and ask you to approve transferring that 16 feet and then subdividing, um, this property into two lots. Uh, I, I believe it was really an oversight on their part. I don't think that was, uh, uh, they were trying to get around the code because certainly they knew they were doing this to come in and ask you for a waiver of plat approval. So I will note that, um, if for any reason the council does not approve this application, that property transfer would be then illegal. Um, so, uh, in any event, the, the, uh, the application does meet the code requirements. And, uh, we've got letters of no objection on file from all utilities, including Central Broward. And, uh, we recommend approval with two conditions. One, uh, as with all waivers of plat, it doesn't take effect until the resolution approving it is recorded in the county public records. And that resolution cannot be recorded until the plat note amendment allowing five homes is first approved. Uh, and the plat note is recorded. So the petitioners are aware of that. And secondly, uh, we'll just, uh, we, we know that the petitioner has until August 10th, 2021, uh, to complete the requirements, um, after which this approval would expire, uh, if they were not able to meet that, that condition. Um, that, that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, uh, Jeff. Elizabeth, do you have, uh, any presentation? Then I'm going to open it up to the council for questions above.
I'm, I'm here and I took care of the feedback on the phone. And, and no, I don't have anything to say.
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff or Elizabeth at this time?
I do.
Please.
Thank you. Uh, this question, I guess it's more for Jeff. Um, can that, uh, area be gated?
No, no, this is two, the, the both lots would get access off Stallion Way. The individual lots could be gated, but Stallion Way can't be.
No, but that's my question. I'm sure.
Any other members of the council have questions of Jeff or Elizabeth at this time? Now, oh.
Yes, uh, my, my question concerns, uh, Lot 3. Um, would Lot 3 now be, uh, fully built out at the 10%? Thus no additional construction could be allowed on that lot?
It's very close. Um, it's possible that, that some very minor, maybe, uh, a few hundred square foot addition, let's say to, uh, an outbuilding or small addition. Uh, but there's not a whole lot, um, that they're going to be able to build, uh, in addition to what they've got today.
Thank you. Any other additional questions?
Thank you.
For Albritton?
Yeah, Jeff, one quick question. The 16 foot that they took from Lot 3, because we asked for 15 foot on Sterling Road. That 16 foot that's in the back, uh, that you said was done without, uh, being platted correctly or without that, and you said they had to August to get that done?
Well, let me clarify that. Uh, no, this, what, what happened was when they, when they purchased that strip of land from Lot 3, they shouldn't have purchased it until the council approved that transfer. In other words, it's part of, it should have been part of this application as opposed to being done before this application. Because let's just say, for example, that, that Lot 3 was made non-conforming. Let's say that Lot 3 was going to be over its maximum plaque coverage or that a setback was violated. The whole in that these applications come to you is to make sure that everything's on the up and up, everything meets code. And so they did that without your approval. That should have been part of this application as opposed to getting it done before they submitted the application and, and came to you. That's what I'm saying. So there, as long as the council approves this application tonight, they're fine. Okay. And the 16 feet doesn't play into this anymore. Okay. You, you're, you're, you're saying that the overall configuration is okay. You're recognizing that the two lots they're proposing meet the minimum size requirements. You're recognizing that Lot 3 is still meeting its minimum size requirement. It's meeting all of its on lot requirements. That's, that's what you're reviewing today. You're recognizing that it does meet all the requirements and that it can be approved. What they have to, what they have to do, and it is time limited, is the plat was limited to four homes. Every plat has a note on, on the face of it. And it, it doesn't really mean anything in terms of, um, what we allow or don't allow. It's based on impact fees. The county requires plat notes that say how many square feet of commercial or community facility, or how many residential units can be built on a plat. And the developer can't exceed that. So whenever a new lot is created in a plat, um, and occasionally you'll find a situation like this where one of the platted lots is large enough that it can still be further subdivided. They just have to go back to the county and ask for the plat note to be increased to allow that extra lot. And the significance of that note is that when, when it was platted, Broward County said, okay, based on four lots, you're going to owe us impact, transportation impact fees, park impact fees, school impact fees based on those four lots. Now they're going back to the county and saying, we want to add a fifth lot. And the county is going to say, okay, we're going to make sure that the roads can handle the traffic for that fifth lot, um, that you pay the additional impact fees for that fifth lot for all these different types of facilities and services. And then we're going to approve you. It's, it's a, it's really a ministerial, um, um, request that they're making with the plat note. But they still have to get that done before this resolution becomes effective. Because we can't approve a lot in excess of what's on the plat. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, also, uh, maybe this is just for council of, of the, uh, property owner, uh, i- if they can hear me. Why was that done? So far, and, and why was it done without bringing it to town? Did, was that their intent all along was to get that, then bring it to town to show the town that they did have the two acres? I mean, why was that done ahead of time?
Uh, it, I'm talking, um, on behalf of the applicant. I really cannot say why they did it ahead of time. I guess I should have known better. Uh, but they, they were just trying to be compliant with, with the rules of the two acres. So they just went to the neighbors and, and made the transaction.
Any other member of the town council have questions at this time? Of course you can ask right after public comment. Um, at this point, we'll, I'll do the generous disclosure. Has anyone had any expertise communications concerning this one?
No. No. I, I had a conversation with Kathy Lamb who, uh, spoke out against this. But she did, um, uh, accept that, um, she understood that it wasn't going to change the lot size, um, below what is allowed in Sunshine Ranches.
Thank you. Uh, Russell, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you for a public comment.
Okay, Mayor, it looks like we have one speaker. I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth. Mr. Hollingsworth, is that you? Can you hear us?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, sir. You have two minutes.
Okay, uh, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue, and I have been sworn. On this here, the main thing is that when it was originally came before the town council, there was big discussion as to how many lots were going to be in there. And we, they ended up saying four lots at that time. They agreed, the town council agreed to four lots. I think it should remain four lots. I don't see any reason why we need to cut this one big lot, which they originally set up to be more, more lots in there, five lots. Uh, it's on their plat for four. They have tried to play a game by buying this extra land and has forced number three to now be completely built out on their property. And so I think it should remain exactly what they originally platted it for. And that the larger lot will be a benefit to our town. And the two, two lots, I don't see any benefit to our town whatsoever unless you're looking for a large house in there with, uh, more taxes. But as the other side of the coin, I think that it would be better to remain four lots. And that is my opinion. Thank you very much.
No.
Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, uh, looks like it's, uh, Jim Lasky. Mr. Lasky, can you hear us, sir?
All right. Here again, uh, I sort of missed the boat.
Sworn?
Oh, have I been sworn?
Yeah, have you, have you been sworn? This is a quasi judicial matter. Have you been sworn? I believe, I, I guess you're saying, no, I can't hear you, but, uh, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. Do you have any help hearing me?
I can hear you, but you're very low. Can you get a little bit closer to your microphone, please?
All right, yes, I heard you.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, uh, I, I think what I meant to say the last time, and I got it out of context, is I didn't hear all of your neutral discussion. But, uh, in the case of a berm you're talking about, to me, that's a filtration device that you would use on a nursery or something like that to, to work the phosphates out of the runoff water. What you need to be talking about, and I believe it's something you can actually define, is based on the build out, the limits of, of fill you have, all right? And the height of the roof, the size of the roof, and all the walkways and all the impervious area, you could develop a ratio for requiring a retaining wall. Uh, Mr. Polikov gave me that idea that I should have remembered from years ago about retaining walls and how effective they are. But one thing you got to remember about a retaining wall is water velocity. Because the water coming off some of these very high roofs and the volumes they are will undermine a poorly done or poorly designed retaining wall. So I don't know how successful Keith's been with his wall, but there's something that should be considered. And not only that, the, um, drainage people were going to require a four to one slope on a berm. So for every foot you want to go up for protection, okay, it's four feet out, right? Four to one slope? That's what they're going to look for. So the berm you're talking about for the last applicant, all right? It's going to be pretty big and take up a lot of valuable property. It would be more cost effective in a, in a high dollar house, everything's high, all right? It's the bill to retain the wall, wouldn't you think? And it's something that can be defined in the code, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Russell, you're on mute. Is there any more public comment?
No, there is not. Thank you.
All right, seeing none, I'll turn it back over to the council for final questions, motion deliberation.
I do, I actually do have one other question I did want to make. So Jeff, how much additional? How close is that, that lot that's closest to Sterling? How much additional leeway does it have before it gets into trouble? Well, I'm, I'm just thinking it already Sterling grew once and, um, it became non-conforming. How close are we if something else were to come up that would, uh, reduce its net lot size? Uh, you're on mute. You're on mute.
All right, um, the one closest to Sterling is the, is the subject property is the one that I'm actually trying to subdivide. Um, it's exactly, exactly four acres. There is no leeway. That, that said, they have dedicated their full amount, uh, for Sterling Road. It is 110 foot quarter, 55 on each side. So they've, they've met that requirement. But this is decimal points, like, you know, 2.0000.
Interesting. Okay. Is there any other potential easements or right of ways that would get in the way here? I mean, I, I know you can't predict the future, but.
At this time, at this time, no, uh, and not in my. At this time, at this time, no, and not in my, not, nothing that I can foresee.
Okay.
I have a question.
And, and one, then just to explain why, the hundred and ten feet for Sterling Road is based on future scenarios. Those scenarios were worked out, I think, both before the town was incorporated and then after incorporation, the town engineers at the time had several different road sections for potentially moving the road to one side, moving the canal to one side, providing more of a recovery area for, for vehicles to avoid guardrails and that type of thing. So the hundred and ten feet seems to be a fairly generous right of way, and it seemed to take into account future needs as opposed to just what's there now. I hope that answers your question. Yes, Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yeah, the question is to, to Jeff. I thought we were, we were supposed to be, the properties were supposed to be in code compliance before they came to us. This one isn't.
Are you?
Am I correct or am I misreading?
Uh, you mean because of the strip of land that they, that they purchased?
Whatever it is.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, you're, you're correct. They are supposed to be in compliance. But I, I talked it over with the town administrator and town attorney, and it was decided that this is the, this is by coming before you for this application, they're, they're seeking to rectify that situation and bring it into conformance. And that's why I'm advising you that this happens. And that if you don't approve this application, they have to give that, they have to somehow reverse that transaction. But we made a decision to bring it forward because it gives them the opportunity to make it legal.
But they don't meet code now.
They violated, they violated a procedural requirement, yes. Because it's a procedural requirement, we brought it before you so that they could address it.
Oh, I, I don't like the hard direction this is going in, to be real honest with you.
Yeah, Jim.
Jeff, there's currently a house being built there. You were talking about, Steve was talking about step backs and stuff for future. They don't really seem to care about the future then, if there's already a current house going there. So if they, if theoretically Sterling Road was widened, that house is already built. So it seems to me, and I'm sorry to say, but they seem to do the things that they want to do and then ask for forgiveness later. That's just me, I'm sorry.
I don't, would it be, would it be, should we table this? Guys, there, you know, we're, we're, we're playing fast and loose here with quasi judicial from my viewpoint. It just, something is, something doesn't smell right here. I don't know how to, how to describe it to you any better than that. And if anybody else has got any other comments on that, I'm not real happy with what I'm looking at right here.
Gary, let me ask a question. Don't they have the August to get this corrected?
Say that again.
Do they have to August to get this corrected, something with the plating and get it registered with the county and everything by August?
Councilmember Albritton, forget, forget that August deadline, forget the six months. That's only if you approve this application. They just need to go ahead and get the county's approval to, to increase the plat note, okay? That's the only thing that there's, that they've got to do that involves any time.
David.
David.
All right, yeah, hey, um, thank you. I echo the concerns of Councilmember Jablonsky. I was really concerned about how they're transferring the property from lot three into lot two without even bringing it properly according to our rules. It deeply concerns me.
I certainly, I certainly, you know, I'm less than comfortable on this, so I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't oppose it. I'm just wondering, what, what can they do differently in the future? It seems like, you know, but, but I have no problem, you know, tabling it, and so we can have some discussions on it. Or the other, the right individuals can have discussions on it before it comes back before us.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Jablonsky, do you have a time and date certain for that? Or is it an indefinite table until time that they can be in compliance with the town code and then come back for consideration?
Um, kind of new territory here. What, what do you recommend?
Either way, if you don't table to a time and date certain, it's going to require re-advertising, which is not a problem clearly, but, you know, sometimes you either do it to a time or day or require re-ad，则it's up to you.
I don't know, what I'm thinking, April, May, June, sometime in May?
So you can make a motion to table to the May seventh meeting, I believe that's correct, Russell, I just pulled up my calendar, at seven PM, provided that the code violation is in compliance. And I suggest that you request that the owner be present because a lot of the things you're discussing probably needs to be spoken to directly with the owner.
Okay, that would be my motion.
It would be, it would be May thirteenth.
May thirteenth.
I apologize, Andy, that's my birthday, so I moved the meeting.
And.
When, when is it, guys? May thirteenth or?
It's May thirteenth at the seven PM, I apologize.
Oh, okay, make a date certain, May thirteenth.
And I second, I second that, amended motion, I second amended motion.
So just a question then, what do we expect from the property owners between now and May?
I, I can speak for myself.
I'd like to have them on compliance.
You know, for me, I, I, as David said, I either, I either expect them to bring to kind of unwind that transaction so it's not out of compliance, or to come before us and, you know, explain what happened there. How, how, why, why did they skirt the rules of the town? And, and try and move this forward in, in such a manner as this, that, that's kind of what I would be looking for. But this gives them the time to unwind the transaction if they wanted to. Perfect, thank you.
How do we, well, how do we proceed, Keith?
You've made your motion, it's non-debatable. Was there a second on that?
Yes, there is.
Second.
Okay, then it's, it's not even supposed to be open for discussion at this point, it's just roll call.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to table.
All right, final quasi judicial item, Russell, if you please read into the agenda, the record.
Item number six is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving plat note amendment application number DG twenty-four dash twenty to increase the number of single family residents, residences authorized on the face of the landmark at Sterling Ranches plat and associated with labor of plat application number WP dash two eight dash two zero, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Is the applicant present? I'm sorry, I'll say it again, is the applicant present? Jeff, who's the applicant?
This is a, this is a companion application with the one that was just deferred, so it's still Elizabeth.
Okay, so at this point, I assume the council will similarly just table this to May seventh as well? And if so, we don't even need to open up the meeting.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, you would, May seventh.
Thirteenth.
May thirteenth, sorry, did it again, May thirteenth.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm here.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
I was raising my hand, um, pretty much the last few minutes of the previous item, which I understand it's gone now. Uh, but I do wanted to get to the record saying that the applicant made this purchase in good faith. They just wanted to make sure that they were going to in compliance. Uh, instead of trying to be sneaky or whatever, they just were unaware that they had to ask for permission to get this little strip of land that would make them into compliance. So I'm gonna make sure that they come in and apologize. But that's what I wanted to say.
So Elizabeth, on the last one, just to make sure that you're clear, the council wants them to unwind that transaction and come back to the council on May seventh without any code violation, then do the procedure the proper way. So just let them know that. But since this is a companion item that we're discussing now, it needs to be tabled also. So if there's a motion and a second to table this to May se, May thirteenth at seven PM, it will be heard jointly with the other item.
So moved.
So Russell, at this point, you have to call the roll.
Yep, okay, just wanted to be called on. Okay, this is a motion to table to May thirteenth. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, the next part of the agenda is public comment. All speakers will be allowed to speak on any non-agenda item for three minutes. Uh, Russell, because of the way Zoom works, you'll have to call the speakers.
Right. Okay, so at this time, if there's any speakers wishing to speak during the public portion, public comment portion, I don't see any at this time, Mayor. Uh, we have a hand up. Okay, the first speaker on the public comments is Jim Lasky. Mr. Lasky, can you hear us?
Go again. Here we go again with the speaker. Yes, I'd just like to reiterate what I said about containing your own water and retaining walls. And I still think it's very feasible for you to come up with a formula when, especially when these houses, the roof gets so high and the, the fill that they put in is so immense compared to other properties that have been done in the past. And problems we're facing, okay, there ought to be a simple ratio for retaining wall. And with the price of land, like I said, in the space requirement, okay? It's perfectly reasonable to require that. And I think in terms of the value of, of the real estate, it's cost effective. That's why the commercial guys do it. Um, anyway, that's my thought, but please think about that. A berm, you're not even, you're not even prescribing what the material has to be for the berm. So if you've got a four to one slope and you've got a lot of velocity, what happens? It's gonna, it's gonna eat up that berm. It's, you know, it's, it'll work maybe for a while, or in the case where there's no water velocity and it's just a drainage conveyance, I understand berm's work. But not, not with the kind of construction flood we're seeing. Anyway, thank you all.
Mr. Lasky. Okay, Mayor, it looks like no one else at this time.
Okay, closed public comment. Any board reports?
We have one speaker so far, Mayor. We have a second speaker as well. The first speaker, Mayor, is going to be George Morris. Mr. Morris, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, how are you? Uh, George, Chair of the Drainage Board. Uh, we had our last meeting just the other day on February third. Basically, we had a couple few discussions. One of the discussions was on a new residential project. Uh, we were looking at giving some release, relief for some drainage on a hundred and one sixty-eight fifty-one South West Sixty-four Street. And that was one of the items that we discussed, and we thought we would try and help those residents out. We put it on our list for things for the future, which is not something we could immediately do because there were some right of way issues, but it's definitely got onto our list to try and help those residents out a little bit. Another thing was high on our list, that we had a preliminary discussion of fill removal penalties for the work with, being done without a permit. Very hot topic, something that our board is looking forward to tackling and coming up with some resolutions for people who fill, work without permits, and fill an easement, et cetera. And we also had a discussion on some potential asphalt work on a hundred eighty-eighth on the ongoing project with regards to overlaying and potential reworking the sub base. But other than that, we had a full attendance and everybody was there participating, and it was a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Debbie Green. Ms. Green, can you hear us?
I hear you. I, I can't see, is Kathy, is Kathy here? If not, I'll give a report.
I don't.
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay. So I'm speaking on behalf of the Education Advisory Board, and as you all know, this year has been extremely challenging in raising funds for the College Scholarship Fund. But we've come up with this very fun idea of these flock of pink flamingos that just kind of mysteriously show up one morning on your lawn. And I know now that there's been, it's kind of been out there on Facebook, there's been a lot of questions about how do you go, how, how can you participate in this fundraiser? So if they mysteriously show up on your lawn, they come along, they come along with a ransom note that pretty much is, you know, telling you that these flamingos, they become very territorial, and if you don't have them removed by some very trained professionals, they'll stay there for a long time. So in that way, then you can then pass them on to another friend. And you can make a donation, and then you pass it on to another friend. And another way, if they don't happen to just mysteriously show up, you can also, there's another way is you can flock a friend where if you reach out to Deborah Roszegga, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Roszegga, at Town Hall at nine five four four three four zero 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 eight. She can get to you the form, so you can get that out and you can go ahead and flock a friend. So that's it.
Thank you. That's a great fundraiser in a tough time. Great idea. Fantastic.
Mayor, it looks like George Morris may be wanting to speak again, maybe for a different board.
Okay.
Mr. Morris?
Excuse me, I failed to mention something that's very important to the Drainage Board. We're actually going to have a workshop, a drainage workshop scheduled for February twenty-fifth. You can refer to the town calendar for what's the upcoming event, so everybody should make a note of that. It's very important to everybody with regards to what's happened and flooding and potential things we're doing in the future. So I just wanted to mention that again, February twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no other board reports for this evening, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Russell. Councilmember comments? Would you like to go first?
I'll go first because I'll be really, really, really brief. Thank you for giving me so much time in Councilmember comments last, last meeting. I think I took up about a half an hour, that's the longest one.
That's important.
It was important. I don't, I don't have a lot tonight, I just had one other thing, actually, I wanted to bring up with you, Steve, because I can't just pick up the phone and call you anymore.
Right.
You know, you and I have served together as board members, we've served together, I believe, with you on the council and, and me as a board member, and, you know, I think I've seen you at every meeting we've ever been at. But the bottom line is the way things are set up right now, I am the council liaison to the, the complaint board, and you're the, I believe you're the liaison for the Drainage Committee. Over the years, you've built a tremendous relationship with Emily and with Jeff to work through issues, and Noel as well, because he was chair for so many years. Um, I want to propose maybe we swap. Because I, I was thinking about this a couple of weeks ago, and I realized I just, when I have a drainage question, I pick up the phone and I call, I call Rod. I call Rod or, you know, all the engineers prior. So I kind of feel like I have an affinity towards the Drainage Committee. I was chair there for like 10 years. And I know you've, the Com Plan Board is near and dear. So if you want to flip as liaisons, that's what I'm proposing.
I would appreciate that. I think that would be, that would be great. I think that would be a good match on both sides. Great idea.
Good. Thank you. And that's all I really had tonight. I mean, I had a list of other things, but I'll let everybody else talk. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll go.
Thanks, Gary.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming as usual. Just, I'm gonna be brief. I have a few announcements. One is, you know, we hit big time when we got our very own mailbox. We're officially a real town now. And it's in the picture behind me, if you can see it. I've got a different screen than you guys have right now. But it's located right outside of Town Hall undercover and it has 24-hour security. And it also has, comes with its own police department right down the way. So it's very secure and very safe and I urge everybody to use it. It's the first one in our town and it's, we've spent a lot of time getting it. I think I wrote an article for the newsletter about it and I want to thank Emily Assetti whose persistence got us that mailbox over and over. She never gave up and kept trying. So I want to thank her for that. The other thing I want to mention is that we have a mulch from a tree project that's had no cost to residents of the town. It's on, located, the piles are located on the five acres right off of Griffin Road. The chain is down, so you can drive over it from 9:00 to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And you've got to load it yourself, you know, which means bring your shovel, bring a tarp if you've got a pickup truck or you have a car, you can bag it however you please. There's several piles of it right there and it's free for taking. There's no, there's no real limit on it other than the size of your vehicle. So I want to make sure everybody knows that. Another thing I want to mention is that the 15th, which is this coming Monday, President's Day, Town Hall will be closed the day after Valentine's Day. And I want to just mention about the flamingos. I got flocked on the, if you look at the picture behind me, that was my front yard. Woke up and I was like unindated in pink birds. It was kind of cool. So I just wanted to mention that. I know Debbie Green has already mentioned it, but it's a truly worthwhile cause and it's well organized, it's well set up. And I urge everybody to keep it going. It was a lot, it was a lot of fun standing around. And I want to thank Councilmember Albritton. There's another picture popped up right behind me. I don't want to take his thunder away from him. I know he's gonna talk about it. But there's, he's really came up with a really nifty idea and used some of his own funds to pay for it and is catching on because I've seen, I've noticed other people with signs in other colors in other neighborhoods saying the same thing. So obviously, this is something good going on where we're alerting drivers to slow down, which I, we desperately need because we do have, you know, traffic issues everywhere in our town. And I want to conclude with one thing. It was very interesting. A resident had mentioned this to me the other day. And that is driving at night, particularly right at dusk. You know, we require or we ask walkers to wear bright colored clothing or have a flashlight. And we ask, and I think it's a requirement for bicyclists to have a light when they're at night. But the last couple nights that I drive, I've come upon horses and they come out of nowhere. And they're dark horses with a rider with dark clothing. And it's in dusk and I got bright lights coming at me in the other direction. And I've had a couple residents mention it to me. And there's no reflective anything on the horse. And I was just wondering if that's something, and I don't, and I don't know exactly where to go with this at this point because it's just something that just came to me here today. You know, do we, should we require reflectors on saddles or on clothing? Or should we suggest it? Or, you know, something from the equestrian community? Because I really would hate to see a car accident with a rider and a horse and a car. And usually, there's no winner. I mean, it's always a bad outcome as we've known and what happened on Griffin Road in broad daylight, you know. And at nighttime, it's even worse. I mean, especially with the riders, you know, a horse right next to the road and lights constantly coming and going. I want to pick that up for some sort of future discussion. So I just want to mention it to out there now. And that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. No, no, go ahead, Jim.
Gary, thank you for the picture, the sign. I really appreciate that. I bought 25 signs on my own and I distributed them throughout a few in Sunshine Ranches, a few in Green Meadows and out in Rolling Oaks. And just to see how they take off and how they were appreciated or not appreciated. And I started getting calls. I started getting emails and all of a sudden I had a request for about 30, 35 more signs. They were delivered today. I have 50 more signs. So I will reach out to those people that wanted the signs and see if we can't get those signs out. And my prejudice, yes, they're green and white. And I think everybody understands why they're green and white. But that was me. And I would like just for people to slow down, that's all. This new radar gun that we approved or on the first reading that we approved, I think that'll greatly help. I've spoken to the officers out here and they're very much looking forward to using that instead of the radar that they currently have where they have to sit alongside the street, line up with the street and you can see them a mile away. I have seen enforcement on 166. They've actually written tickets on 166 because when the new sheriff there in Davie showed up, I saw the reports and they were all out on Griffin Road and 172nd. So I mentioned it and I guess the squeaky wheel gets the grease because they're here on this street and it has slowed the traffic down. Another thing that slowed the traffic down were the pink flamingos. On Sunday morning, when the cars came by, 90% of the cars slowed down to a crawl to see those. Some even stopped and took pictures. People got out and took selfies. I mean, it was the first morning that they were out and they were absolutely well received. Now, I do want you to understand, and I don't know if you'll be able to see it, I'm gonna try and hold it up, but somebody is trying to horn in on the pink flamingos. If you can see, I don't know if you'll be able to see those or not. There was a whole flock of white ones in my front yard today when I woke up. So I don't know who put those there, but I hope that they don't get, take away from the pink flamingos for sure. And let me mention one other thing if I can, and I hope I'm not out of bounds. And if I am, Andy, stop me real quick. I had a report in my mailbox about what was accomplished in our town in 2020. I read that report and I was absolutely amazed that we got all this stuff in our town accomplished. People don't understand what goes on in town with the town staff, with the appropriations, the grants, everything that they do. That report was, to me, was wonderful. And I thank the town staff and all the council members that were involved, everybody in town that was involved in making 2020 what it was, even though it was a pandemic year for everybody. Thank you very much. And if anybody liked those signs, reach out to me, call me. And I got 50 new signs, so they'll be going out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. David.
All right. Hey. Couple, I got about five items to talk about. First, our earlier discussion during the Land Management Agency provisions regarding the berms. We're really close in South Florida to ground zero Miami Beach for climate change and water intrusion. And as a result of that, we have been under guidelines to raise the height of the pad for new constructed homes. And I'm thinking that maybe we need to address this. The increase, especially when you have an adjoining lot. And a perfect example of Debbie Mantel's property, the home right next door. The property is really high. When it rains, she gets flooded in. But I'm thinking that maybe at the earlier stages, a berm should be put in because of the big differences between the new lots and the older lots where the homes are a little bit lower and rainwater starts rushing off into the older properties. I think that adversely affects our older homes that we really, really preserve. That's something I'm kind of really interested in. Second, I heard a mention of a builder's acre. I don't know, is there a definition anywhere in our code for acres acre? And it's something I'm really not particularly fond of, but I realize that there are places it has to exist. So maybe we can look at making a definition for that. I'd like to see the mayor's ordinance regarding density of adjoining properties brought for the council really quick. That's something that I think is really, really, really important, especially for the few large parcels that are left. Advisory Board attendance. I think we had, we were discussing three member, three missed meetings. They'd have to come back before the council to get reappointed, kind of like an administrative removal. I've heard some discussion at the meetings. I know that the last park, I think the Parks Board, one of them last night, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Were insufficient number of attendees at the meeting, couldn't even go forward. And then finally, following up with Jim speeding. This evening, I drive home, Lou Ray Road, right at 25. And this black Audi just passes me. It was like a rocket ship going around me. And it turned into what's called Rio Drive, Rio Road. It's parallel to Hollity, but it's just like one block to the west. And I did get the tag number, reported it to Jeff. And then he advised me that just recently Officer Veronica Love wrote a kid a ticket on Tuesday night on Sterling Road right around 14200, which is in between Hollity and Hancock, clocked at 90 miles an hour. And that's in the middle of the night. And this is just crazy speeding. I mean, that's dangerous. Few years ago, I watched a dog get run over in daylight on Lou Ray. And to think that somebody's speeding through here at 90 miles an hour, that just infuriates me. That's, that's what it does. It infuriates me. So that kind of wraps up my comments. I think that wraps it up. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Just a couple of comments as well, just a couple of follow-up things. I think David, the, speaking of that berm, and that is controlled by the local drainage districts. And so we're gonna have them at the next council meeting on the 25th. So I think that would be a whale of a question to have in the hopper, ready to, ready to go when we get them right here in a, you know, an audience right there in front of us. So thought there. Also wanted to just follow up on the mailbox. Super excited to see the mailbox there. You know, it's not, it's, it's, it, it, one thing, it's a little bit of a statement, you know, that we got our own mailbox, which is pretty cool. But the other thing is it's kind of serious in that more and more, we get the crime reports and we hear more and more about mailboxes being raided and the fraud that happens because of that. So I would encourage residents to go ahead and use this mailbox just when you're mailing things out to keep it safe and secure. Let's see, a couple of the things, really, I just wanted to do one other thing, just a quick follow-up for the mulch. Just so everybody's secure, knows exactly where that's at. That's, that's gonna be at that five acres there at Dykes and Griffin, that corner right there is where that's at. So pick it up there. And then the last thing, I just wanted to give an update on the progress that we're making as far as the fire fee. And that's being worked on diligently. I don't have an answer yet for it. But we've laid out a schedule that I feel like we're gonna stick to to allow sufficient time to review this, to make sure that we haven't created any new issues and also allow 30 to 45 days for residents to review it before we have to submit it. So we've got a schedule in place that should allow for that. We've got meetings set up with the vendor to get additional information. Andy's been all over it. Marty's been following up on it and Chris is doing the research. So we don't have answers yet. I'm not comfortable yet that we know exactly what we're gonna do yet. But all the, the process is in place and I think we will get the information and we'll be able to make the right, the right answers. Make the right choices for the right answers. All right. So with that said, any legal comments?
Sure, Mayor. I'll be brief. And just to tell Councilmember Kaczynski, your item, Mayor, that we worked on drafting together concerning the zoning and the change in the zoning, I believe that's before the Com Plan Board right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. So I guess as soon as that's done, we can get it before the council for consideration. So, you know, the sooner out there, the more protection that the town will get. So in regards to the Morales case, just real briefly, the item was supposed to be heard by an emergency injunction today by the court as a result of an illness of the council for Mr. Morales. The court has agreed to allow them to bring in additional counsel to assist with the matter, has ordered mediation prior to a March 16th hearing and has also basically made it clear that if it does not get resolved at mediation, that he expects that then to, or the mobile clinic to be moved. So I think we will get resolution on this sooner than later. I expected a, an attempt to continue today. I wasn't surprised by it, but I think in the end, the town will get what it wants, but it may just have to wait another 30 days when I say what it wants to be in compliance with the code, just to be, be clear on that. And just some other real quick tidbits. I sent the council today in a ordinance that is required by the South Florida Water Management District just to give the members of the public a heads up when they see it on the agenda. South Florida Water Management District is requiring every municipality to pass their model form ordinance dealing with irrigation and how many times people can irrigate their properties in trying to help the environment in conservation of water. Clearly, most of the ordinance didn't apply to the town. It dealt with definitely different types of cities that weren't always using the water that the town's using from wells and otherwise. As a result, the town did put some modifications in that ordinance. We're hopeful that South Florida Water Management will approve it with our modifications that relate more to our town. But I just want everyone to know when they see it, we're required to do this. This is not something that is just coming before the town. It's something that we're forced to do by the governmental agency in order to continue to apply for grants from South Florida Water Management District. And likely, I think that that's gonna extend to other governmental agencies as well. So just giving a heads up on that. Other than that, Mayor, no further legal comments.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll be even more brief. You all covered everything that I had on my list for tonight. So thank you for that. I guess that's the advantage or disadvantage to going last, but I don't have anything else to add tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andy. All right, Russell, item number 12.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the future land use element of the Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan pertaining to the U.S. Highway 27 Business Land Use Category, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency, requesting recertification by the Broward County Planning Council and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All right. So this item was reviewed by the Com Plan Board and forwarded back to the council. There was significant. the council. There was significant interaction between the board and the Bergeron family. Lonnie, I see you there. It's good to see you. Welcome to our meeting. And so we've, we had a significant back and forth and some compromises. I don't think anybody was 100% happy, but I think we found a pretty happy medium. But I will, Lonnie, if you would like to say a few words, since the majority of that property is in the family's hands, there certainly welcome any comments that you would want to make.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, returning council members, congratulations on your recent victories in the last elections. We would like to say that, yeah, this was the process that has gone for several years now. And we feel like it's a public and private partnership that gives benefits both to the, the land that's located in the appropriate area and, and also to the town to create additional revenue. The biggest comment that I think I have is that I'm feeling a little left out. If you would, if Debbie Green is still here, you know, we have a 24 acres near Sterling and 27 that we haven't seen a flock of flamingos on. So, you know, more importantly, me and Frank Say is here, Vice President of our real estate, we will be paying attention and hopefully that, you know, we're in the town and we'd like to be recognized and, and contribute to some of the, some of the great things you guys are doing. But, but now I think that we've reached a conclusion here that it benefits everybody involved. And I thank the council for that. And, and, and we appreciate working with you. One, one more thing, Alligator Ron apologizes for not being able to make it. He spent a long day at South Florida Water Management as a commissioner. He wanted to be here, but he sends his regards.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any council comment on this before opening up to the public? Okay. Any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
That's correct.
I saw a quick hand from Debbie Green. Maybe that was just an acknowledgement that the flock of flamingos was heading, heading your direction, Lonnie. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that was pretty much it. But can I, can you tell, what, what's the address?
It's the corner of Sterling and US 27. There's, there's a gate about 100 feet off of US 27. If you put them anywhere in the vicinity and, you know, near there, there's a road that goes down the center from the south to the north, anywhere where the grass is not too tall, so that when we drive into work, Frank and I, that when we see them, we will take appropriate action.
All right. We'll take care of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any other public comment. Public comment is closed. Any further discussion from the council?
Uh, I'd just like to thank Lonnie and your father for working with us on this. I really deeply thank you guys. I think it's going to be a good, good thing for Keith.
Great. Thank you, David. I also want to thank the, the comp board for all the time that they put into it. It was a good, they did a great job on it. All right. Not seeing any other comment. Russell, if you could please call a question.
Okay, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Yes.
Breakers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. Okay, item number 13.
Item 13 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to create a new zoning classification entitled the U.S. Highway 27 Planned Business District. District regulations and related amendments, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any, any comment from the public on this item?
No one has their hands raised, Mayor?
Any council comment on this item? Okay, Russell, if you can call the, call the question?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
You're breakers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Item number 14.
Item 14 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order to American Pride Mechanical in the amount of $28,448.00 to replace five air conditioning units servicing the town council chambers and the town hall administrative offices, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council on this item? Seeing none?
I, I just got, I guess, after, after public comment, I guess I'd like to have Andy, a little discussion to the town, the residents, to let them know how bad the air conditioning is in town hall. That's about it.
Yeah, let's do that now, before we open it up. Andy, if you want to kind of give.
Sure, if I may, Mayor. Yeah, the council chambers has four units and they have been just horrible for, for many years. And I'm sure a lot of you realize who have been in for meetings when we're open to the public, frequently, it was very warm in there. And we tried to cannibalize and move things around and service those units and get those functional. And we've just never been able to do it with any, with any, any luck or without any long lasting effects. So we've just reached a point where we really need to replace the units with something completely different. We're changing vendors, we're changing manufacturers. We just, we really need to start over there. We, we really had no choice on this item. I know that Sandy is on the line as well, and she's the one who bird dogged this project that brought it along. So I thank her for that. But this is, this is unfortunately, it's, it's unscheduled in this quantity, but it's absolutely required. We have, we have zero air conditioning in that room at the present time.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Okay. Is there any public discussion on this item?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Any other council comment on this item? None. Russell, if you could please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breakers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. The next item was, is an item that we do on an annual basis, and it is a review of the charter officers of our town. Andy has put together a pretty substantial document of the accomplishments that were obtained last year. And so I'm going to ask him to kind of summarize that so that there's an appreciation from public. I know I was, you know, I was not in office last year when a lot of this was going on. So as I read over it, I, I saw a lot of things that I didn't even know was going on, you know? So there's a lot in there, a lot of accomplishments, and especially in a very difficult year of the pandemic that 2020 was. So it's definitely, when we talk about a review of the charter officers, it's important to understand the accomplishments and the things that were done in the prior year, and, and what, what they've been able to pull together and do. So I'm going to ask Andy to kind of give an overview of that. And then after that, we'll have time for, for council member discussion and kind of comments on that. If there's any questions with those items. And then I'm going to turn it over to Keith. Keith always assists us in this process with some of the mechanics of increases and how, how we would, compensation would be revised based on what we're hearing. So that's the process. We can definitely, we'll, we'll then talk after that as well, council. But that's our process. So Andy, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Let me start by saying on behalf of Russell, Marty, and myself, we welcome the opportunity to discuss our performance over the last year. We, while we like to think we had a pretty good year, we all recognize there's always opportunities and room for improvement. So we look forward to hearing your feedback this evening. All right. To begin, I'd like to share a brief summary of some of our collective achievements during 2020. The obvious starting points are dealing with the coronavirus pandemic. The severity and the lack of knowledge that we had during the onset created hardships unlike anything any of us had ever experienced before. It was a very scary time, and without a doubt, a gallant year of my professional career. From the beginning, we focused on two primary goals. We needed, we knew we needed to do everything we could do to maintain service levels for the residents. We also needed to do it in such a way as to protect the health of the staff. We knew if the virus ran rampant in town hall, it would have shut us down. We became more knowledgeable as the year progressed. We were able to innovate and find new ways to provide service and maintain communication. Our meeting tonight on the Zoom platform is a perfect example. While town hall remains closed, our residents continue to receive high levels of service. If an in-person meeting is, is required, we do so either outside the building or we meet them on site. As the year went on, we continued to get smarter and we adjusted along the way. Through it all, we never lost focus. We always got the job done. I know you were all previously, and you referred to it. I know Councilmember Albritton referred to it. We previously supplied you all with a detailed list of the townwide accomplishments for 2020. A brief summary, and I will be brief, includes securing funding through the CARES Act and FDLE to protect town staff and facilities. We entered into a public-private partnership to financially benefit the town for years to come. We acquired and deployed additional laptops and other hardware to support remote work and maintain predict productivity, and that was CARES funded. We implemented Zoom for town council and advisory board meetings and Microsoft Teams for staff use. We continued to enhance the GIS system. We added several layers to that. We continued to grow the town's social media presence to help with our outreach efforts. We obtained approval for over $2 million in Surtax-funded TIS door and drainage projects. We continued forward with existing TIS door work, working through the contractors staffing challenges. We continued onward with multiple drainage projects. We completed our work at Frontier Trails Park. We completed and implemented our comprehensive emergency management plan and our continuity of operations plan. We transitioned townwide landscaping contract to a new vendor. We maintained the town's commitment to the National Wildlife Federation Community Wildlife Habitats and Tree City USA designations. We timely filed our annual CAFER without comments. We managed our Hurricane Irma cash flow in a manner that saved almost $100,000 in interest expense. Again, this represents only a very small sample of the extensive information previously provided to council. We do look forward to hearing from all of you tonight and the residents. And I'll have some comments I'd like to share with you at the end as well, Mayor, if I may. But at this point, I'll turn it back to you.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Andy. Appreciate the overview. All right. So at this time, I'm going to open this up to the council for any, any comments, recognitions, or areas that, you know, potentially we see areas for growth, improvement.
Did you want me to address the ask first, or did you want to do the review first?
I thought what we would do is we would talk about the accomplishments and, and how we did last year first, and then we would, we would move into the, the funds.
Yeah. So I'll jump in real quick. This, this list is an amazing list of accomplishments, given the fact that we've only seen these guys twice in the last year, more or less. I mean, we, they've been extremely busy. And, you know, COVID presented challenges, but our town has a lot of challenges, as, as everybody learned. The, the only area, and, and I've been dealing with this, when we were working with the fire study, and, you know, there were some residents that were concerned and making complaints directly to me, I reached out to work with Andy and Marty to try to resolve. And, you know, the fire study is really Marty's baby. And, you know, the areas that, I've been a manager for 30 years. So, you know, coaching these types of things comes pretty naturally. So Marty and Andy and I have been meeting more or less every other week for about two months now, to try to work on, you know, how we can improve some of the concerns that popped up, like, you know, phones don't get answered, or phone calls don't get returned, or, 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 or. And, you know, you hear those things. They're generally, I, I have a million ways to fix that, but my, my solutions aren't there. So again, I've been trying to work through to improve some of the communications that come out of the finance department and help improve the situation that we've had jump up there. So I wanted to put that out there. And, you know, Marty has been extremely receptive to any of the comments I've made. So I want to give him, you know, a pat on the back for being open to it.
Great.
But the other two gentlemen, they, all three gentlemen did a great job. It's just that one thing I wanted to call out.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. Andy, I, I didn't hear this. You may have mentioned it, but, you know, I'm a little tone deaf. Did, did you discuss that there was a surplus last year on the budget? Did you mention that?
Some of the financial numbers I actually gave to Keith, and I know he's got that as, as part of what he was going to chat about. So I
Oh, okay.
threw that out. But yet, yes, it'll, I, I know Keith plans to cover that because I did turn that.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to, I thought I didn't hear it. I wanted to get credit out because that's really, really important in how we spend the public's money. And we do it in, in such a frugal manner with our team, you know, between the council and the administration, that it's, we had a half a million dollar surplus this year. That's no small number, you know, for a 10, $12 million budget. I mean, that's substantial. And that, that takes a lot of nickels and a lot of dimes and in many different areas to, to add all that up. So, you know, some of it was windfall, but we've already discounted, you know, for that. This was actual real savings that was produced by our management team. And, you know, I think that's, that really kind of speaks volumes as to where we are. And Bob, to what you pointed out, yeah, I think the big hiccup last year, if I had mentioned one, if I had put my finger on one, would be, would be the fire study. And we're continuing, and we recognize it, and we're going to continue to, to work towards it, you know? And I know we made a lot of people unhappy, and we're, you know, we're stepping backwards, step two, two steps forward, et cetera, you know, with one time rebates and things of that nature. Hopefully, we won't have to go through that next year. So, but, but I would like to mention that, I didn't think I heard it with Andy, I wanted to be sure. And it's, it's, it'd been, this is like the 11th or 12th year, 11th year that we've run a surplus budget, which is, I think is pretty outstanding when, when you consider, you know, all the things that we have to address, you know? And I, I look forward to further discussion, further discussion.
Thank you, Gary.
Mayor?
Yes, Jim, please.
Mr. Mayor, I think most of y'all understand, I come from a little bit different background than, than some of y'all. And it's very difficult for me not to be able to pick up the phone and talk to you or the other council members. And that, that bothers me. My background was, we sat down at the table and we worked it out. We could talk about anything you wanted to talk about till we got it settled. Well, I now have the town staff to help me with that. I can go to them and relay to them questions, and they will give me answers. And I greatly appreciate it. As a new councilman, I don't know what I'd do without them. I, I'm not very versed on a lot of the new things coming in, but I'm learning. And I'm reading, as you can tell, I read everything that comes through. But without the town's help, I'd be floundering because I can't talk to you. And I think that's one of the things that bothers me the most, that I can't. But I do thank the town, the staff, Andy, Russell, Marty, all of them, Rod, all the ladies in town. I thank you very much for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, David.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I echo a lot of the comments about the highlight, high professionalism, the gentleman that I deal with at town hall. The fire assessment, while it was The fire assessment, while it was a problem, my sight on that was more procedural. And the way I, I looked at it is the fire study committee was unable to review that final report. Basically because the council did not attempt to extend the timeframe of that fire study committee. They actually expired, sunsetted before the final report was there. So the fire, the fire study committee was unable to review that final report and then pass their advice, advisory status to the council. So I think it was more procedural and probably the, the council should have moved to extend that committee so they could actually do that. Aside from that, I am super pleased with the way the fire study had been managed. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Yeah, I'd like to say a few words as well. I think that the staff that we have, you know, when I'm coming into office, you know, the fire study is something that truly was disappointing last year. But we're working to fix that, and I'm going to judge based on whether we can fix that or not. That's, that's, that's what I'm looking towards. Was not in office when it happened. We were able to do the best we could to mitigate the issues when we got into office and, and resolve it as best we can. But, you know, we are, we're looking forward and, and the real issue is going to be, you know, pulling the staff together so that we can resolve this, so that next year is a smooth year. And I feel, I feel good that we're on the right path, but there is still a lot of work to be done. It's, we're not on the glide path. We're still, we're still fighting to find the answers and to determine what happened and how to resolve it. So there's a challenge there, and, and I look forward to the staff in working towards that and resolving that. That aside, having, having been in this town for 25 years, having been on the council for 12 years prior to this, and having just run for office, speaking to a lot of residents and hearing what it is they're looking for this town to be and what they're looking for this administration to do. I have to tell you that I could not feel better than to see the three folks that we have here, Andy, Russell, and Marty, to pull this together. I, I, you know, I look at this that we all, doesn't matter how long you sit in this chair, you're just here for a short time. And, and, and my goal is to accomplish as many of those issues that I heard about over the last six to 12 months as we can. And I feel good that we have a staff that is, it's not that they're going to hit the, the ground running, they're already running. And they're already in action. And and so I look forward to us as a council, you know, giving them direction and ensuring that they stay on the path, that they're focused on the right things and moving forward. But I feel very good, I feel very good about these three individuals. I feel like Andy is one of the best admin, I, I will say this with no offense to any of the other administrators I've worked with. And over the years I've been on the council, I've worked with, I don't know, Keith, you probably know better than I do, but five or six, or maybe even more than that, administrators. And, and I will say there were some fine administrators there, but I will also say that Andy is the best that I've worked with. And so that is, that is, that is exceptional. I, I want to say a couple of words. Russell, I feel like, and, and no offense to Andy, but I feel like we have two town administrators in this town. Because we are fortunate to have Russell here with all that he does, all his experience. You know, until you get into town hall and you see his desk, see all, all that's going on gives you an appreciation for all the fires that he's working and all the things that he does, whether it's technology, the GIS, the, the actual job of clerk, you know, and then all the things that are associated with the associate town administrator. I feel we're very fortunate to have him and he does a great job. And then Marty, you know, Marty, as, as Gary said, has kept us into, in the black. And, you know, with surpluses year after year after year. And that doesn't just happen. Certainly, that's a team sport that makes that happen. Financial administrator on their own cannot make that happen. It's, it's a team. But on the other hand, you can have a great team, and if you don't have the right financial administrator there, it's not going to happen either. We know that because we've been there. And, and, and so we're fortunate from there. So, so I think that we are fortunate to have the individuals that we have. With that said, you know, including myself, none of us gets to relax. We've got a lot of work to do. This year is going to be a challenging year. We're still not out of COVID. We've still got a lot to do. And, and so there, there are, you know, there's a lot in front of us that needs to get done. And so, but I feel good with the team we've got. So I'm, I'm really pleased about that. So with that said, I wanted to turn it over to Keith so that he can walk us through some of the financial side. He has kind of polled the, the council individually since Sunshine laws do not allow us to really discuss this till we get here. But one-on-one, he has done some investigations and speaking with us individually, so he's going to report on that.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I, I want to let everyone know that it's a strange situation that we do charter reviews on the three charter officials, even though the majority of the council is brand new and really didn't have a direct opportunity to review those individuals while in office. And maybe that's something we look at when the charter review committee starts up. But fortunately, we have the experience of Councilmember Hartman, Vice Mayor Hartman, Councilmember Jablonsky. And, and Mayor, you've been a part of this forever. And, and so, you know, you all were able to add words of how great the staff is here. One thing I, I want to make sure that the general public understands, and that is the, the town charter, when we created it back in 96, right after we went to the legislature to start the formation, it was written to require a checks and balances system, which is why Andy reports directly to the council, I report directly to the council, the town clerk reports directly to, essentially to Andy but to the council, and the finance administrator reports directly to the council. It's also an interesting tidbit that although, as you aptly say, Mayor, that Russell has the experience, knowledge, and abilities to fully lead a municipality anywhere in the United States, the reason you're reviewing him today is that of a town clerk and not as the assistant administrator because our charter actually states that the charter position is that of town clerk and not assistant administrator. So I just wanted to put that into a little bit of, of perspective moving forward. I should also say that while your staff and you have this checks and balances system, and we all come forward, especially in the public meetings with the united front on issues, I, I don't want anyone to ever think that there's not much debate and, and being upset back and forth with, with each other on a continuous basis. There is, there's a tremendous amount of give and take in this job, and there's not too many weeks that Andy said, I had a great week with Keith and vice versa, and, and probably that goes for Russell and Marty as well. So, that being said, I did have the opportunity to meet and speak to definitely Vice Mayor and Councilmember Jablonsky. And at the onset, Mayor, before I, I met with you and sent everyone a little insight of what everyone was looking for. And that is because they were here during that fiscal year to be able to really understand where they were coming from in the review. So I, I want to just go over a couple of things. Andy spoke a little bit about finances, and I looked into that as well. As it relates to the general fund revenue, conservatively, because it hasn't been finalized yet, it's about $450,000, almost a half million dollars that was added to the general fund reserves last fiscal year. These funds came from the following three areas that we were able to determine. Roughly $195,000 was in general fund savings. $148,000 was in solid waste savings, and $93,480 was from direct debt service reduction. Andy advises previously that there was over $2 million obtained in Surtax dollars. The town was incredibly successful due to our administration's efforts, Emily's efforts, and, and getting those funds, Rod's efforts. And also the town was successful in obtaining the $101,000 in CARES Act funding. One thing that a lot of people don't understand, I, I do work in, in a lot of municipalities. And the best time that you can see how administration works is during the crisis. And, and COVID has really shown how wonderful this staff really is because while everyone else is floundering, trying to figure out how to run their operation, Andy's group immediately figured out, okay, we're going to do stagger times at town hall, but we're going to stay open, we're going to make sure everyone gets the service in this town that they deserve. And, and it's been remarkable to see that from the days that I've been in the office now. We looked at, after we looked at the economics, I had an opportunity to sit with Andy to say, what is everyone looking for, you know, understanding the fiscal realities of COVID and, and going forward, what may be the new realities of all municipalities. And when, when Andy sat with me, he basically said, look, I have not received any pay increase in quite some time. You know, I was received a 5% bonus, you know, I think last year, maybe the year before on that, but not a direct pay increase. And if you actually did a 5% bonus again, it would be more money this year than what Andy came back seeking. So I'm going to go through each individual intern of what they were seeking. But when you all have your formal discussions, I would ask that you vote on them independently so that the record is clear. Andy is looking for a 3% salary increase. For the general public's knowledge, Andy is currently making $180,000 a year. If this increase were granted, his new salary would be $185,400. Because of the fact that the town also has a retirement plan for its charter officials, the town would also be adding $540 a year based on the new salary additional to his retirement plan. So the total increase that Andy is looking for, for the success of last year is $5,940. Just to put that into perspective, last year's Andy's bonus was $9,000. So it is considerably less than what was given last year as a bonus. And Andy and I spoke about the fact that when you look at the CPI, the CPI was roughly 1.5% last year. So the increase is really de minimis if you're applying it against the CPI. Other things to keep in mind, although other municipalities have tremendous benefits and cell phone allowances, car allowances, and the like. In fact, prior administration, administrators had gotten some of those benefits, including, you may recall, Chris Russo had, had a quite extensive benefit package. We don't really have any benefit package. And if you just look at straight salaries of neighboring municipalities without looking at benefits at all, Cooper City's administrator gets $195 a year, Pines is at 304, Tamra at 249, Sunrise 214, Margate 191, Hallendale 190, Davie, Davie is 253, North Lauderdale was 195. Clearly, I tried to pull out smaller municipalities of one directly near us. And, and Fort Lauderdale's administrator got an enormous increase a few weeks ago. Based upon the above and the fact that there are four years left on Andy's contract, so, which is a nice amount of time of commitment to the town, I did not have any problems after speaking with so many of you recommending that 3% increase. So that is what Andy is seeking, and those are the figures for Andy. And if I may, Mayor, I'm going to move on now to Russell, and then I'll do Marty after that. Russell, even though in the pecking order should probably come last because of the town clerk status today, I moved him up to second because it's, I view him more as a assistant town administrator. So again, Russell serves as both the town clerk and assistant administrator. He, like Andy, was looking for a 3% salary increase. Russell currently receives $120,000 a year. So if the increase is approved, his salary would go to 123,600, and his retirement account would increase by $360 annually for the total increase of $3,960. Last year, Russell received a $5,250 bonus. So like Andy, his request was looking into the realities of COVID and understanding that he couldn't seek what he was seeking last year, and it was exceptionally important to Russell to have it in, in the base of the salary increase for everything that he does. Finally, we're going to look at Marty Sherwood. Like Marty and like Russell and Andy, Marty was similarly looking for a 3% salary increase or a 5% bonus. Marty is currently paid $128,000 annually. With a 3% increase, Marty would receive $131,840 annually with an annual retirement payment, additional payment of $384 for a total increase of $4,224 a year. If the council desires to give a 5% bonus instead of the salary increase, Marty would be given a one-time bonus of $6,400. Marty serves at the pleasure of the council. I could not find any current contractual guarantees. Last year, he received a bonus in the amount of $6,400. As it relates to Marty, clearly, the town is in amazing fiscal shape. But as Councilmember Hartman mentioned aptly previously, some of the town council expressed to me disappointment with the outcome of the fire assessment. There seemed to be a, a very large understanding that the outcome was really that of the consultant who everyone shared tremendous disappointment with. But some council members expressed the fact that since it was being oversought by finance, they believe that finance should have had a little bit bigger role in controlling that outcome. As a result of that, some council members expressed to me, and this is really the first time you all are hearing this directly, is that they thought that, that maybe it should be discussed whether or not it shouldn't be a full 3% bonus based upon last year in the fire assessment. And some have asked to look at a 2% increase or anywhere in between 2 and 3%. Just for sake of numbers so that everyone can hear it, if you did a 2% increase, it would be 2560 increase to 13560 annually with a $256 annual retirement benefit. Or again, and so that's essentially the difference between 2 and 3%. But, you know, it's going to be up to the council completely if you would like to come what he asked for or what some council members preliminarily suggested before they had the opportunity to sit and speak with Marty. Once again, before turning it over back to the council, it's an absolute pleasure working with this staff. I think you do have an incredible team at this municipality. And, you know, it's thrilled being a, a part of it. And I, I know that they all do their utmost to ensure that the, that the best is being done for the town. And for anyone to come to town hall, even I work late, sometimes, sometimes I work late at town hall, I'll leave late at night, and Andy, Russell, Marty will still be there even when I leave past seven, eight o'clock on a non-council night. So, you know, they all work very tirelessly for the town, and they love it, and they're committed, and it's great to be a part of it. So Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you with all that background information for consideration.
Great. Thank you, Keith. And I appreciate the role you play in, in gathering this information. Okay, so let me open it up then to the council. It seems like we have kind of a unified view for Andy and Russell. I just want to confirm that, and then if there's any discussion that we would want to have as far as the two versus the 3% increase for Marty. Anybody want to jump in there?
I agree, Steve. Absolutely agree. You know, when you look at the numbers that they saved us last year. You know, when you look at the numbers that they saved us last year. Yeah, half a million dollars in reserves every year is a great thing to have in the next year. You never know what goes bump in the night with hurricanes and all sorts of things where that money is important or something comes up we haven't seen. I ended up at three percent, the total ask is fourteen thousand dollars for people that have saved this a half a million in this year's budget alone. So I don't have a serious concern with three percent. I'd be happy with it right now. We didn't get a raise last year, but I think these guys deserve it. So I support.
Great, thank you Bob. Yeah, David.
I'm more inclined to give Marty the three percent. I agree with both Russell and for Andy, but I'm also inclined to give Marty the three percent just because we are in such solid fiscal position. And as I stated earlier, the fire assessment, the fire study. If the prior council had extended the existence of that committee. Then in existence, it wouldn't have been a pumpkin. For lack of a better word, it was nothing after it expired. Once it expired, it couldn't provide any advice to the council. And it should have been in existence to provide advice. So my position is that Marty should get the three percent.
Thank you, appreciate it, David.
Yeah, I'll go next, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm okay with the three percent for Andy and I'm okay with the three percent with Russell. And I could go either way with the two or three percent for Marty depending on how the rest of the council feels about.
Thank you, Gary. Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I was on that board, the fire board. And I'm not real sure that we can blame one person for that. I'm not sure that it can all fall on Marty's shoulders. I know that the head always is the one that gets chopped off, but I'm not real sure that the people we used led us down the right road. There were things changed in that that was not approved by the, by the board that was going to go to council. And I think everybody kind of got blindsided by that. You're working on it now and you see how difficult it is to get it straightened out. And I'm not sure, like David said, had the council, had the board been able to continue and to work on it. We might have come up with a solution to where you wouldn't have to be scratching your head today and worrying about it. So to blame it on one particular individual, I'm not sure that's a proper thing to do. And as for is Andy and Russell, three percent is a wonderful increase. I do have a question about the retirement fund. Where does that money go for the retirement fund? It seems like such a small amount. Where does that go? Is that a 401K or is that some other type of fund that it goes into?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, it's a 401 account with the I C M A, which is the International City Managers Association.
Are those funded matched by the town or are they out of you?
I mean, it's a ten percent, the ten percent is from the town. And then we're at liberty to make our own contributions. We also have other retirement accounts that we can contribute our own money to as well.
Great, thank you, Jim. I, I, my thought is that I'm comfortable with the three percent this go around. Because I, you know, I think if you look at the body of work that Marty has done, we're very fortunate to have him. You know, we are in an excellent shape. We, very few, very few towns or cities are in the financial condition that we are in, in a positive way. So I think we're very fortunate and I think that Marty gets a lot of credit for that. He has led the team that has really brought us out of a situation where we were in in a bad situation, honestly, when he arrived. So I'm not going to judge him on this one event. I will say that I do differ from some of the comments that were made earlier in that I do hold the individual that's, you know, at the top, I hold them accountable for it. And so Marty, I know we've talked about it and I look for, you know, we've set up a schedule to get this resolved and get it in place. And I look forward to that being executed and working out. You know, but I'm not, you know, one event, I wouldn't want, you know, I wouldn't want anybody to be judged by one event. But I think the body of work stands for a lot of great things. But you know, this year, we have to make sure it doesn't become two events. That's what I'm, I guess that's what I'm saying. So our, you know, our challenge is in front of us. And hopefully this is something that is just a blip on the radar a year from now. So I would definitely support the three percent because I expect that we will get past this and it will not be a recurring event. Okay, so we wanted to vote, yeah, go ahead, Gary.
I'm just asking, do you need a motion?
Yes, so let's do this. As Keith mentioned, we want to do three separate motions. So if I could get a motion on Andy's increase first.
I make the motion that we agree to the three percent retroactive to January first.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Thank you, Bob. Any, so on this item, so let's open it up to the public. This is a discussion item, but you know what, I think it's important that we do hear from the public on this item. We don't, I just think it's important that we get feedback. So I'm going to open it up to the public for them to comment on this if they would like to as well.
Okay, Mayor, we have one speaker, Mr. Doug McKay. Mr. McKay, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Welcome, Doug.
Yeah, hi, everybody. How are you? I just want to say you guys are on board with these increases and whatnot. I would tell you that's support a hundred percent what you're doing here on giving them what they've done and where they've got us and where they've brought us and where they've kept us. Are there hiccups along the way? Sure, there are. The fire study clearly is something to continue to be worked on and you guys are on it. So that's all that matters. And, but I just wanted to stick my nose in and say, yeah, I'm in support of you guys supporting these increases. It does a stupendous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
We have one other speaker, Mayor, George Morris. Mr. Morris, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, good evening. Yeah, I would like to say, first of all, I've worked with Andy since the day he's been in this town. I've worked with every other administrator prior. And I think for the three percent, y'all should jump on it and take it right away. He's a tremendous asset to this town. And I'll also say the same thing about Russell and Marty. Marty's the last one. I think a lot of times I leave the building. And you know, I was also on the fire assessment board and I wouldn't judge him for that. I know he tried very hard. Again, three percent, I'd take it and run. And thank you.
Thank you, George.
Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised.
Thank you, Russell. Any other discussion from the council?
Just a question, I'd probably have to ask for an amendment to a motion. But do we want renewals of all the contracts associated with these increases? I'm not getting a second.
I think we're fortunate to have them here. I think we're fortunate that they want to be here as well. I think it's a good, a good marriage both ways.
Totally agree.
The best way to be.
Yeah, no, just throwing it out there for the fun of it. I was intending on pursuing that. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, Russell, if you could please call the roll on this.
Sure, and this is for Andy's increase. So this is Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes, you're right, Chris.
Yes. And then if I could get a motion on the increase for Russell?
I make a motion, we increase Russell's three percent retroactive to January first, twenty twenty-one.
A second.
Very good. Any further council comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
To Russell. I don't know, somehow it doesn't sound right that you should be calling the roll on this item, but if you could please call the roll, I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
David, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you all.
And then if I could get a motion for the increase for Marty?
I'll make the motion for the increase for Marty.
For how much?
Three percent.
Thank you.
You want to make a retroactive?
Yes, thank you. Retroactive back to
January one, twenty twenty-one.
I'm reading from the script. I'm reading from the script.
I don't have the script.
Did I hear a second? Was there a second there?
Yeah, I second.
Great, thank you, David. Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
There is one hand raised, Mayor, and it looks like it's Noel Hollingsworth.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, since there was so much discussion on the, our study. The main problem was it never came back to the board. And that's the problem we have with a lot of boards in our town where a vendor goes out, does a study and then brings it back. We have found in the comprehensive plan board that the man that before it goes to the council, it comes back to it. And I think that the council needs to make that for all of the boards, a rule. And this I thought was the appropriate place to do it. It's not Marty's fault in any way, shape or form because he's a money guy. He makes sure we can get the money for whatever we're going to do. The policy is the council's responsibility. And they designated that to the fire board, which was a volunteer ad hoc group because it was not renewed. There was a lot of defects that went along on this and it's not Marty's fault. And I'm totally and completely for three percent for Marty. So therefore, and I hope the council will take a look and make sure that everything that a vendor does is brought back to the the board that is appropriate for and makes that a rule for all of the boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Okay, we have no other speakers, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Russell. Any further comment from the council? Being none, Russell, if you could please call a question?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Absolutely.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you all. Thank you all, and the staffs that all report up to you. I know it's a real, it's a team effort. Yes, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I know you've all heard me say before, government is the ultimate team sport. And we can only be as good as those who surround us. Speaking for myself, for Russell, for Marty. And we recognize that we would not have been as successful over the past year as we were without the support of the current council and the past council. I do believe that the level of communication and that cooperation that we enjoy is as good or better than any city or town anywhere. So I want to thank you very much for your support. I will say that another key to our success is the dedication and the professionalism of the town staff. None of us could do this without them and our success is truly a shared success. So we thank the staff for their effort and for their support. We know that we're lucky to have each and every one of them on the team. And I will say, just in closing, is that I'm grateful every single day for the opportunity that I have to lead this organization. And I want to thank you all again, council and staff, Keith as well, certainly for the opportunity to do so. So thank you. And Russell and Marty may want to thank you as well.
Yeah, I'll just take a quick moment to thank you all. I'm extremely privileged to work with the, you know, the council and certainly our town administrator. In a private conversation with Andy, I told him that I felt that he did his best work this past year. Working through the pandemic and leading us through something that was unprecedented. And basically, you know, showing us how to get it done, I think was some of his finest work. So thank you all.
Thank you, Russell. We can't hear you, Marty. We can't hear you. There you go. There you go. Yep.
Yes, it's Marty Sherwood. Thank you very much. I keep pretty much covered the accomplishments and primarily the COVID nineteen played a bit of impact, as everyone knows, as to the study and the time constraints involved. I consider constructive suggestions and improvements very important. And I, I've mentioned to you, the old timers, the old elect officials at the beginning of my term. That I'd like to receive it to order remedy as quickly as possible. And to the new ones, we'll be meeting as part of the budget process doing it. And also, if you have any difficulties, you do come to me and I appreciate it. So I consider you all, the Bruce Arons and Bill Belichick, and I will be Brady. And we'll take this to the next Super Bowl and get another ring. So thank you very much for your support and encouragement.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. Okay, all right, item number fifteen, the budget calendar.
Okay, what, let's talk for a second, okay, so you can say.
Okay, okay.
No, Mayor, that was me. I wanted to make sure that Marty, you made an adjustment to this. So I just wanted to make sure that you announce the adjustment for the record.
Okay, I sent the screen to Russell to put on a share. Russell, can you put up the screen for the calendar?
Did you change it so that there's a meeting on my birthday again this year? Is that what you're telling me?
No. I think yours was Sunday, so I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it, right?
I knew, I knew a year would finally happen where it wouldn't be on my birthday.
True, so first asking Russell for a little system, I sent him a PDF. In any case, as he finds that we're approaching, congratulations to all staff. And we've had our kickoff and tonight is our tenth budget under the Burns era leadership for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And if Keith wants me to cover the two important changes, I'll mention them quickly. And that will require us to modify good. As you can see, the budget calendar is very extensive, step by step procedures. Meeting with staff, meeting with department heads. As it relates to current council, it's, I'm going to target tonight just the yellow, the yellow items because that will impact the two date changes that are required tonight. On the first yellow one, if anyone wanted to expand it, thanks, and Russell's got it magnified for everyone to view. Tonight is our kickoff to council for the proposed budget calendar, which we require for your adoption for us to follow and lead the plan of action for our next year budget plan. The individual meetings will take place between March eighth through June fourth. We will get individual feedback from you individually. Request, we like to hear, come in, meet with myself, Russell or Andy individually. And then we have one-on-one and group meeting after we get all departmental feedback. Departmental feedback dates are covered all by the pink. Scroll down to the next yellow item. Scroll down to the next yellow item. And that will be our first date adjustment. The July 29th, 2021 is our proposed date, which will shift our regular agenda to July 29th in accordance with your direction to give the public, to give yourself more time to review and digest the proposed budget book that will be distributed during the period of July 12th through the 19th. So you will have an extra seven days to review and discuss prior to the public hearing. And that's one of our important change. Move down to the next yellow, please, Russell. August 17th, this is our Tuesday, August 17th, annual workshop, communities invited, that is at 7:00 PM, open to the public, provide more feedback. And this would be before our two formal public hearings that take place in September. The first one, and this is the one that's always tentative where we normally set up. Normally, our budget hearing, or I should say the second Thursday is September 9th, 2021. But as you can see in blue, the Broward County government supersedes and has preference to us. So we cannot meet September 9th and we must meet before September 15th. So our only window to hold our first public hearing to meet our Florida statutory requirement is Monday, September 13th. So that's our second change required, which will shift from Thursday, September 19th to Monday, September 13th. And then the last yellow date will be our normal fourth Thursday, September 23rd, 2021, final budget adoption and final mileage. So I'll open it up to discussion for anyone. If you have any questions, this obviously goes into our budget book, the proposed and the adopted. And if anyone has any problems, let us know now. This has been reviewed and vetted with staff. And let us know if all the dates are okay with you guys. Or if anyone has any questions. I turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. Appreciate the, I'm always impressed with the calendar every year because, I mean, it lays out everything. So great plan and looking forward to kind of walking through that.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, is this, is this a voting item, this one?
We get a motion to adopt, yes.
Okay, all right, excellent. Great, thank you, Gary. Is there a second? Thank you, Bob. Any, any further discussion, any adjustments, corrections on the calendar? Seeing none. Let's open up. Is there any, any comment from the public on this item?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Russell.
Just one quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Tends to pop up with some of our calendars. Has it been vetted for any religious holidays or anything like that? Or anything in particular, holiday wise, days off?
Good question. I have not, I have not checked, but I could look quickly now and see if there would be a problem, either sunrise or sunset.
Okay, let us know.
I had checked it originally and it wasn't. I just, I'm only concerned with that one change to September 13th, Marty. I don't believe there's a conflict.
No conflict, no conflict.
We could always bring it back if it's
We can always change it later if we need it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Russell, if you could please call the question?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob, for reminding me to check very much.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. Item number 17, Russell.
Just a set of minutes, Mayor, for the various past council meetings.
So I think we can take all four of these with a single vote.
I have a problem on one of the pages.
Okay.
On page 146. Actually, I just want to make a motion to approve. I wanted to see Andy's face. It doesn't exist.
I'm flipping away trying to find out what we missed.
Hey, a little levity never hurt. Minutes are fine. I've got over plenty. I don't know anybody else.
Yeah, we have a motion.
You got me.
Make a motion.
It's Russell who's got the big smile.
Okay, any public comment on this item?
There are no hands raised, Mayor.
Any further discussion from the council? Okay, Russell, if you could please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
And a motion to adjourn.